All right, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for coming to our annual reorganization. If you could all please rise for the invocation by Pastor Aaron Beerhoff, Great Perform Bible Church, Newton, New Jersey.
Please bow your heads.
Okay, would you please bow your heads? Dear God of infinite wisdom, might power, justice, and love. We humbly come before you in the name of Jesus Christ to acknowledge you as the giver of all that we need for life and prosperity. Thank you for safely guiding each of us through the difficulties of this past year. Though we don't know what this new year holds, we pray that your grace, wisdom, strength, power, and everything else would abundantly be present to satisfy us through every adversity and blessing. May your peace and generosity rest upon this body and town in 2024. Lord of all, we humbly acknowledge that all government comes from you. May those who you grant authority not use their authority to buttress their egos, but to do justice, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with their God. And likewise, may citizens under their authority learn to practice what is good and right and to live peaceably with all people. Enable us all to be inspired by the supreme example of your son, our Savior Jesus Christ, who, though he was king and overall, came not to be served, but to serve, and to give his life as ransom for many. May our attitudes mirror his as we effectively serve those whom you have appointed us to bless as servant leaders. Good Father, God, be still your favorable determination, peace, confidence, and joy upon those being installed into their respective offices today. Assist each of them in faithfully carrying out the duties of their offices in a way that might promote the better welfare of their families, their neighborhoods, this town of Newton, the state of New Jersey, and these United States of America. We pray all these things, knowing that you will do even more than we all can ask or imagine, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Do you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I salute the Republic of America, stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated.
Terry, it's only yours. Roll call.
Mr. Kuss?
Here.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mrs. Diglio?
Mrs. LaFaw?
Here.
Mrs. Teets?
Here.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this reorganization meeting was given to the two newspapers of record and posted on the official bulletin board on January 6th, 2023. At this time, I'd like to take a motion, accept a motion for designation of a temporary mayor.
I'll offer Michelle Teets as a temporary mayor.
I need a second. Who was that?
One second.
I have a motion by Mrs. LaFaw, second by Mr. Dixon, to name Ms. Teets as temporary mayor. That was a lot to spit out. Mr. Kuss?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes. And I will take a nomination for mayor for the selection plan.
I'd like to nominate JP Kuss for mayor for 2024.
One second.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFaw?
Yes.
Mayor Teets?
Yes.
Mr. Kuss?
Yes.
Now we'll have the swearing in of the mayor. Don't pull up.
Give this your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I, John Paul E. Kuss, do solemnly swear.
I, John Paul E. Kuss, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the mayor.
Of the mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I will now entertain a motion to select the deputy mayor.
I would like to nominate Councilmember LaFaw.
Is there a second?
One second.
Take a roll call?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Kuss?
Yes.
I say your name.
I, Helen LaFaw.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office of.
All the duties of the office of deputy mayor.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations.
All right, we'll now move on to comments by the town manager, council members, deputy mayor, and mayor, starting with Mr. Russo.
Thank you, Mayor Kuss. On behalf of all Town of Newton employees, professionals, and volunteers, I want to wish Mayor Kuss and Deputy Mayor LaFaw the very best of success in their leadership roles. And I look forward to working with them and all council members in continuing the great progress we have made towards making Newton a better place to live, work, and visit. I also thank Michelle Teets for her leadership as mayor in 2023. I am in my 16th year of service as your town manager, and I therefore want to express my sincere gratitude for the privilege and honor of serving as the chief executive of this wonderful organization. As the county seat and economic engine of Sussex County, the work performed in Newton on a daily basis is critical to the long-term success and vitality of the entire region. This is a responsibility we take very seriously, and we look forward to carrying out the ambitious goals, policies, and objectives of the governing body for 2024 and beyond. I wish all of you and your families the very best of health, happiness, and success. And to the people of the town of Newton, I pray for your prosperity and a safe, enjoyable, and most of all, healthy new year. May God continue to bless the town of Newton. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Councilmember Dixon?
Yeah, so I just want to say thank you to outgoing Mayor Teets for her work the entire year last year. She did a great job steering the ship. And I want to congratulate Mayor Kuss and Deputy Mayor LaFaw. I know you guys are going to do a fantastic job in your roles. And I look forward to working with you guys and accomplishing what we want to accomplish this year.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Councilmember Teets?
Thanks. Just quick. I'm sorry. A quick thank you to fellow council members. I don't know. You guys know I get emotional, so didn't think I would. Um. It was, it was a lot of fun being the mayor. I have to thank Tom and the council because you guys made it fun. All the town professionals, the town staff has been awesome. You know, Terry's always giving me some cheat notes for the meetings because it does get confusing when you're calling on different people and changing roles. And so I really appreciate Terry's guidance this past year. And, you know, to Kat, Tom's, Tom's right hand. His, probably his boss some days. Kat has been wonderful helping me with everything and the whole town staff, and especially to Janine. Loved working with Janine. Together, I think we planned or we did 25 weddings. So that was a lot of fun. One of the things I enjoyed the most. I also enjoyed all the ribbon cuttings, the parades, meeting new people. And the other events that we had, especially those that contained food. Eric would appreciate that, and I would comment on how good it was. So I thank everybody, and I wish Helen and JP, or Mayor Kuss and Deputy Mayor LaFaw, the best going forward. So congratulations, guys. Um, so and just another quick note, since Gregory LaFaw is in attendance. So I missed the last planning board meeting, sort of. But I want to take this time to thank Greg for his more than 20 years of serving on the board. As a civil engineer, he brought a lot of experience and knowledge to the town and to the meetings. Your calm and professional demeanor at all the meetings were certainly helpful. You were always fair and well organized and taught your peers and professionals, including myself and all the council members in front of you. A lot about buildings and structures and stormwater and all these other things I never thought I would know. So I appreciate all of your help and experience. You're going to be a tough act to follow. But we thank you for more than 20 years of service, and I'm sorry I missed the last meeting. Thank you. And that's all for now. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Teets. Deputy Mayor LaFaw?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to thank everyone that's in attendance today, coming out in the middle of the day to attend our reorg meeting. It's very much appreciated, very much acknowledged. Congratulations, JP, on your mayoral year. I look forward to working closely with you and achieving many goals that I know that we'll have and continue to have as a council and an administration and as the staff on behalf of the town. Sincerely want to thank Michelle for 2023's mayoral year, Michelle, and your leadership. As you've outlined, there are a lot of community events to attend and represent not only us, but the town. Lots of meetings to attend and be our voice for meetings to preside over and officiating 25 weddings. That is a lot. And you did it all with grace and with humor in your Michelle way, which we all love and appreciate. So I want to thank you for the hard work that you've put in last year, and JP as her deputy, to support her in all of her efforts. I genuinely and heartfelt really want to thank Tom, the staff, our professionals, all the volunteers that work day in and day out tirelessly for the town of Newton. Your hard work is often behind the scenes, but please know that it goes noticed in so many ways. You are often the face of the town when the public comes to pay their bills or file an application or to find out about the workings of the town. And our police department is there day in and day out, putting their lives on the line. Our fire department responds 24/7. Our EMS volunteers are answering record numbers of calls. You all are supporting not only our residents and our businesses, but our visitors that come to the town of Newton. I truly believe and have always said Newton is the best municipality in Sussex County, if not throughout this state. And we can't do it without all of you. So thank you for your work day in and day out. To our volunteers on our boards and our commissions. Thank you for what you do. I look forward to coming back to the planning board and continuing the great work that is done there. Michelle, thank you for recognizing Greg and his service. I wish you all the best of good health and success in 2024, and cheers to a great year ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor LaFaw. So thanks to everyone for coming today. Thanks for everyone who's supported me so far in this endeavor. I was born and raised in Newton, a fourth-generation Newton resident, and I think it's really neat. And it's an honor to have my family kind of culminate in this moment as the mayor. And maybe some of the emotions spilling over from last year. You know, growing up, anyone who knew me, you know, knew that one day I wanted to be the president, and clearly, I'm not eligible yet. I don't know old enough, but you know, I'm the mayor of the town of Newton, and I think that's a pretty good place to start. So one thing that I kind of sat over the past few weeks thinking about what I would say today. And it wasn't really until this morning that it finally hit me. I'm going to read an excerpt from an essay that I wrote along the way somewhere that I had to update quite a bit because lots of stuff has changed in the town since I wrote this. But I try not to be long-winded when I don't have to, but I apologize if this is just a touch lengthy because it is an excerpt, but I think it speaks to the town quite a bit. And for the DPW, I won't keep you on your feet any longer than you have to be. So of all of Newton's elements, the unique attraction to the town of Newton is best conceptualized by the reimagined municipal motto released in 2014 in conjunction with our 150th anniversary. Country-style city cool. As a gateway to the Skylands region, Newton approximately mixes Sussex County's rural countryside with a busy feel of city life, supported by our Spring Streets 2018 naming as one of New Jersey's great places and placement within New Jersey's Main Street America program. As you enter the town from any of its nine entrances, a dramatic shift in the side yard setbacks clearly portrays to even the most passive of observers, a distinct yet proportionate rural-to-urban transect. Coming down from High Street, I'm coming, coming down High Street from Freedon, up Water Street from Newton, I'm sorry, up Water Street from Hampton, over the Sparta Avenue Hill from Andover, the Spring Street-centric outward development of Newton instills a sense of arrival when entering the town unlike any other county municipality, all the while retaining ample community services without an overbearing sense of urbanism. Unbeknownst to many, Newton in 1993 was New Jersey's first municipality to be designated as a regional center, recognizing and enhancing our town's positive planning and development as Sussex County's hub. As rural routes and postal roads grew, Newton was located right in the center. The county government found its seat in Newton, state highways 94 and 206 pass through its heart. And the unique commercial offerings in town add to the comprehensive level of residential, commercial, and community services offered. For anyone entering Newton's downtown area, the Old Courthouse stands as the most visible testament to the history that remains. The Sussex County Historical Society holds New Jersey's oldest continuously operating museum building on Main Street, and Spring Street maintains one of the oldest fire museums in the country. Although the county's early 20th century claim of more cows than people has been lost as development has pushed us into bedroom communities, Newton retains a healthy historic registry. The repurposed Merriam Shoe Factory, railroad beds, and historic cemetery remind us of the industries of yesteryear. Newton and Sussex Shoe Companies, Gustave Genert Paper and Lens Mill, Century Milk Creamery, Sterling Silk Factory that permitted the compact development responsible for Newton as we know it. Have you ever ventured off of Newton's main thoroughfares, feeding off of Newton's rich history? The course of development our town's has, our town's history has afforded residents and visitors a wide breadth of architectural elements and intricacies unseen by most communities. From colonial revival to craftsmen, federal Georgian, Greek revival, Gothic revival, Italianate, Queen Anne, Richardson, Romanesque, Second Empire, vernacular Victorian, and plenty of contemporary construction, Newton can stand alone as an architectural tour. The Newton Public School system is one of the oldest around, previously taking in students from most of Sussex County. Still remaining as a regional system, Newton Public School has maintained top-level performance with both state and national achievements in sports, and most recently STEM development through the school's robotics program. Sussex County Community College in Newton offers the county's only connection to post-secondary education with associates and certificate programs itself, along with connections to Passaic County Community College and four-year bachelor's extension to Felician College. As Newton, as the Newton community grows, the college has expanded its automotive technology program and has begun to match the community's need for STEM education with high-tech firms continuing to enter the town. Relative to Sussex County, Newton is a densely populated, I'm sorry, densely developed municipality, but that does not prevent its ability from maintaining its longstanding outdoor, open space, environmental programs for residents and visitors to enjoy. With three parks, in addition to Newton's Square, Open Green Plaza, the town and Chamber of Commerce are able to offer clean exercise, recreation, and specialty events through sporting leagues, a community pool, public movie nights, its annual Newton Day Festival, Easter egg hunt, 5Ks, parades, the Taste of Newton culinary display, baseball, basketball, football, hockey, soccer, swimming, tennis, residents are left with few lacking sporting opportunities. Health and happiness should be the priority of any governing body. To manage these goals, the Newton, the town of Newton boasts the most robust public safety program, public safety system of any of the county's municipalities. Possessing its own police department, Newton has extremely fast response times in all cases of emergencies. However, the police department goes above and beyond to support the town representing the utmost in professionalism while maintaining a strong commitment to community policing. The award-winning, highly-successful Clear Program, enhanced by the Newton Police Department, supported our residents by offering targeted assistance to those struggling with substance addition. Special police officers foster an invitingly safe environment in the downtown Spring Street district through foot patrol and bike patrol during business hours. Residents are consistently invited to take, to connect with patrolmen on a personal level via the coffee or cone with a cop events. The Newton Fire Department provides the town and surrounding area with prompt exhaustive fire protection with a fleet consisting of nearly every type of fire apparatus, in addition to providing care to Newton's youngest via their Operation Santa program. The Newton First Aid Squad, Sussex County's busiest, fastest, and most progressive EMS agency, provides comprehensive and expedient treatment and transportation during the town's medical emergencies, in addition to community first aid and CPR education. In addition to the municipality governance services, the town holds Sussex County's only hospital, one of the county's two urgent care centers, and the only free medical clinic in the county. Newton has undergone significant development over the past century, but really sets it apart from anywhere else. What should draw visitors in, both new and old, what should make anyone proud to call this town home, is the potential that Newton continues to demonstrate. Urban renewal of the 1970s repurposed traffic patterns to increase Newton's position as the county's central hub while maintaining a commitment to cost-effective public housing. In spite of extreme rates of land non-ratability, Newton has managed to remain innovative in the responsible redevelopment of underutilized parcels as seen through Bristol Glen, North Park Urban Renewal, Newton Town Center, Thor Labs, Grand Velagio, while maintaining limited effect on the school system's population. While the most recent redevelopment of the G and H property, as well as proposed redevelopment of the former Armory, Thor Labs, increased development perspective, relocation of multiple other high-tech firms like Automated Wireless Environments, Analytical Science and Technologies, Planet Networks, the facelifting of Spring Street by local business owners in the Neighborhood Preservation Program, there's a lot in store for this town, and we should all be glad to be a part of it. Downtown Newton was once the place to be for Sussex County families on Friday night, and it's starting to happen again. Is Newton perfect? Of course not. But you can bet we're working on it. Thank you. And now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Russo, if you can provide a rundown?
Resolution one, designates banks as depositories. Resolution two, town manager as hearing officer. Three, payment of recurring bills. Four, legal newspapers. Five, schedule of public town council meetings. Six, rate of interest to be charged for non-payment of taxes. Seven, officials to sign checks. Eight, CFO to sell bond anticipation notes. Nine, tax assessor, town attorney, town manager for tax appeals. Resolution 10, mayor, class one member of the planning board. Resolution 11, deputy mayor is class three member of the planning board. Twelve, cancellation of small balances. Thirteen is purchases through the state contracts and purchasing co-ops. Fourteen, resolution recognizing town events and town endorsed events. Fifteen is the EEOC language. Sixteen, Deb Danielson from Municipal Recycling Coordinator. Seventeen, petty cash and change funds. Eighteen, members of the ad hoc redevelopment team. Nineteen, local emergency planning committee. Twenty, Teresa Schlosser as tax search officer. Michelle Teets, council liaison to Board of Education is 21. Sandy Diglio, Economic Development Commission, 22. Matt Dixon to Historic Commission, 23. Current fund balance policy, 24. Water sewer balance policy, 25. Jenny Rafferty, Clean Communities Coordinator, is 26. Twenty-eight, municipal auditor. Twenty-nine, temporary current operating and water sewer budget. Thirty, auditing services for Locep for Nissabachia. Thirty-one, tax collector to sell municipal liens. Thirty-two, Dave Simmons, disclosure contract for water engineer. Thirty-three, various attorneys for 24. Jess Caldwell, disclosure contract for planner. Thirty-four, thirty-five, Keith Mitchell for insurance. Thirty-six, reappoint certain board and commission members. Thirty-seven, Fred Marglon for sewer engineer. Thirty-eight, Holshower and Hollenstein for appraisal services. Alan Abramson for volunteer senior citizens coordinator. Thirty-nine, Excel Environmental, Resolution 40, Dakotas 41, Gibbons 42. Are providing of shared services for animal control to Stillwater. Forty-three, there is no forty-four, that's an Easter egg in case you didn't catch it. Forty-five, claimant certification. Forty-six, insurance broker, Dave Vazza for insurance. Forty-seven, reimbursement for vehicle expenses. Forty-eight, PSNS for alternate water and sewer engineers. Forty-nine, KKPR for marketing. Jess Valero for ACO is 50. Fifty-one, Sean Canning for QPA. Phoenix Advisors is 52. School monies to the school district, 53. Temporary judge, the Honorable Mike Carlucci, 54. Strategic plan for municipal alliance, 55. Charag Mehta, alternate prosecutor, 56. Orlando Rodriguez, alternate public defender, 57. We're providing shared services to Branchville for animal control, bills and vouchers. And then Eric Hall, Three Woodfield Road for the Newton Fire Department is an application. We have one resolution off consent and one appointment. Thank, that's all.
Are there any questions or any resolutions that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Not seeing anything, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
In a second?
One second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Kuss?
Yes. Then move on to Resolution 27 dash 2024. Entertain a motion to approve that resolution?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 27 dash 2024.
One second.
Okay, a discussion? Okay. Roll call?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Kuss?
I abstain. Now move on to our appointments. The mayor's appointment of a class two representative to the Newton Planning Board. This is the appointment of the town manager by the mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
And next, the swearing in of the Honorable Michael Carlucci.
I, Michael A. Carlucci.
I, Michael A. Carlucci.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States and in this state.
In the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all of the duties of the office of municipal judge.
Perform all the duties of the office of municipal judge. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. So help me God. Exactly, that's what.
All right. We next have an open, sections open to the public. So at this point in the meeting, the town council welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic. To facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard, speakers are asked to take one turn at the microphone, and please limit their comments to three minutes. The clerk will keep time. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments, so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. Council may choose to comment after the entire public portion has concluded. Please identify yourself and spell your last name for the record. Yes.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Michael Inganamort, I-N-G-A-N-A-M-O-R-T. I am here just to congratulate the new mayor, Kuss, Deputy Mayor LaFaw, and to congratulate and thank outgoing mayor, former mayor, Teets. I am your incoming state assemblyman and very excited and proud to be representing Newton and all of the 24th Legislative District down in Trenton. I am, however, the mayor of Chester for another five days, and I was looking at Michelle because I had my last council meeting on Tuesday, and I had a real big frog in my throat, so you did better than I did, and I understand the emotion. It's an incredible privilege to serve a community as mayor. That being said, I very much look forward to being in Newton. Often, I grew up down the road and worked in Newton for quite a while on Main Street, corner of Halsted. uh, I grew up down the road and worked in Newton for quite a while on Main Street, corner of Halsted. And, uh, I hope that you all know that you can reach out to me and my legislative colleagues, Senator Parker Space and Assemblywoman Dawn Fantasia. Uh, at any time, we'll be operating a joint legislative office in Sparta on Wilson Drive off of Route fifteen. It's the same legislative office that is there today, if you're familiar. We'll also be opening up a satellite office down in Morris County, so stay tuned on that. Uh, with that being said, congratulations, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council, and I look forward to working with you in two thousand and twenty-four, and, uh, God willing, beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public in person? Anyone on Zoom?
Hands raised.
Okay, not seeing anyone, we'll close the, open to the public section. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Councilmember, we, uh, sorry, Mayor Kuss, before we do that real quick, I just want to acknowledge everybody that's here as well. But also our GPW guys, because I think you might have a busy weekend. You guys are always on point and support every event, which is truly appreciated, and I apologize for not mentioning you earlier. But, uh, we also know that you'll be busy, you know, clearing those roads to get us ready to go out for more bread, milk, eggs. So we appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Kuss.
Any other comments?
Mayor, just want to acknowledge former Mayor Richardo. He's always been, been good to the town and good to all of us, so I just wanted to acknowledge Joe for coming, so thank you.
Alright, not seeing anything else, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at twelve thirty-five.
A second?
I will second the motion.
Alright, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming, everyone.
Please join us for refreshments, please. Thank you all.